Okay, if everybody will go ahead and have a seat, we'll have Mr. Pastor Jack Marais for the invocation. Would everybody please stand for the invocation? Mr. Jack.
We'll start this off with a prayer. Heavenly Father, great and mighty God that you are, we thank you this day and we ask you, Lord, to bless this city council meeting here today and bless our mayor and our city council members, help them to make the right decisions, oh God, here today. Lord, bless our fire department, our police department, and our urgency responders, Lord, and we ask you to bless the citizens of this town, oh God, and keep your hand upon this city, Lord, help us, oh God, to grow, Lord, but to grow wisely. Heavenly Father, we thank you for your presence here tonight, and we thank you, Lord, for everything that you do in our lives. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll call the meeting to order at 6:01, and we'll have Chief Raina lead us in.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, and justice for all. Amen. Amen.
We'll turn to the city clerk for a roll call.
Lambert.
Here.
Begonia.
Jones.
Lewis.
Yannis.
Okay, we have a quorum. And now we'll go to accept an emotion for the consideration of approval of the agenda. Mr. Begonia?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
Hey, I have a second. Ms. Lewis?
Second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
You oppose? Agenda is approved. We will now move down, and we got a couple of presentations. I will first start off with our certificate of recognition. Mr. Justin, could you step up here? I'll let you pronounce your last name. This is a certificate of recognition presented to Justin.
Ragganton.
Ragganton. Planning Technician, Community and Economic Development Department, in recognition of your outstanding performance and dedication service to the City of Los Banos and for being named Employee of the Month for April 2024. Want to say something?
No. Thank you, guys.
Great work, Justin. All right. It's the Poppy Day proclamation. Do I have some ladies up here? This is a proclamation recognizing Poppy Day. Whereas America is the land of freedom, preserved and protected willingly and freely by citizen, soldiers, and whereas millions who have answered the call of arms have died on the field of battle, and whereas a nation of peace must be reminded of the peace of war and the debt owed to those who have died in war, and whereas the red poppy has been designated as a symbol of sacrifice of lives in all wars, and whereas the American Legion Auxiliary has pledged to remind America annually of this debt through the distribution of the memorial flower. Now therefore be proclaimed that the mayor and the city council members of the City of Los Banos do hereby proclaim May 24, 2024, as Poppy Day and ask that all citizens pay tribute to those who have made the ultimate sacrifice in the name of freedom by wearing the memorial poppy on this day. In witness whereof, I have herein to set my hand and cause to be affixed the seal of the City of Los Banos this 15th day of May 2024. And here's your case.
Thank you so much.
On behalf of the auxiliary, Unit 166 of Los Banos, I'd like to say thank you. This is Jerry Alves has worked very hard for this proclamation, and we appreciate it. We will be distributing poppies at a few of the elementary schools, and of course, the VFW and American Legion will be distributing as well. So, thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Thank you, guys. All right, we'll now move on to item six, public forum. Members of the public may address the city council members in any item of public interest that is within the jurisdiction of the city council, includes agenda and non-agenda items. No action will be taken on non-agenda items. Speakers are limited to a five-minute presentation. Detailed guidelines are posted on the council chambers information table. At this time, I'd like to invite the public to come forward and speak, and remind everybody else if they could silence their phones.
Mayor Boating Council, Pastor Raul Granillo with Mercy Springs Church. I wanted to let you know first that we will be opening the church beginning on June 2nd as a cooling zone for the City of Los Baños, and it will remain open probably into August, well, through August. It will be opened every day of the week from 3:00 PM until 8:00 PM and earlier if necessary, but 3:00 PM to 8:00 PM, we'll have the church open, ready for anybody who needs to come in. I know most of the time when we think of these areas, we think that they are for the unhoused, for the homeless, for those who can't, but I also want to encourage others in the community who just want to save on their electric bill to go ahead and come and enjoy the cooling there. There's TV, there's crafts, games, whatever they want to do there. I also want to let them know, you're not going to come to a church where you have to be fed church stuff. This is just simply opening the building to allow people to come in, enjoy themselves, enjoy the cooling, get out of the heat, and so we will be doing that, working with the city, and we also appreciate the city allowing us to be a part of that with them. I believe that our cooperation, working together, is so important. So, on that note, I want to also encourage the council to continue to reach out and be creative in ways as it tries to work with other entities in our community. I can't speak for all of the nonprofits or all the different religious institutions, but I can speak for the Christian churches for sure, to say that I know they would be very pleased to work with you when you need something to say, hey, can you help us with this? Maybe we need to raise funds for this. If nothing else, we're good at potlucks and raising funds, right? I mean, and that's the thing that takes something off of your plate, and so we want to help you with that. We have resources, we know the people very intimately, and it is our calling to help with that and to work with our leaders in that. So we just want to be beneficial and helpful in that. I know Pastor Steve has always done a brilliant job of working with the city. I encourage you to reach out to others. I know Pastor Keith at New Canaan is also just an amazing asset to this city, and there are so many other ones. So I'd encourage you to do that. That being said also, I'm gonna shift a little bit. It's important to, I know in your position, and I know that as the city, I know in any field of government, we have to recognize the importance of the separation of church and state, and that's something that I also believe is very important, that separation. I believe it helps us to maintain the areas by which we are to govern. The calling of the government is different than the calling of the church, but that doesn't mean that they're in opposition to each other. It just means that we have two different areas of our community into which we work, and those things can interlap, and they should interlap with each other. For me, for example, as a Christian, this Sunday is Pentecost a Sunday for us, and I know for many, it's the, for many Christians, it means it's the outpouring of the Holy Spirit, and everybody talked in weird tongues and understood each other, but the part of that that I wanted to share with you that I think is important, that applies to you as leaders, is that part of understanding each other. They came into a place where a bunch of people from a lot of different places gathered to do one purpose, to be one community, but they had no idea about each other and they couldn't communicate with each other, and I find that to be something that happens in all of our communities. It's not exclusive to Los Baños. But the gift of the Spirit was that gift of being able to understand others, not to speak to others, to understand not just what it is that they're saying, but why they're saying it and where they come from. And so when you open up this time to the public, and I know you're quick to respond when you have to defend yourself, and I don't blame you for that, but I would encourage you to take time especially to really listen and ask yourself, where is that person coming from? What is it that they're saying to me? Communication requires a whole lot more listening than it does talking. It requires trying to understand where other people are at, a lot more than it does trying to impose our ideas upon them. So I'd encourage this council, the leaders, all of us in our community, to maybe spend more time listening to each other and getting to know each other. Thank you.
Thank you.
Before he leaves the dais, I just wanted to reaffirm the date and times of the cooling center, please.
Yes. So the days, starting June 2nd, we will be open every day of the week from 3:00 to 8:00. Obviously, the public is invited when we're open for any of our church services anyway. It doesn't mean you have to go into the sanctuary, go to church. You're welcome to go hang out in the fellowship hall and have coffee and donuts and watch TV or whatever you want to do, so during those times as well. We don't have a solid ending date. We will continue through August. It just, it kind of depends, right? We have, sometimes summer lasts well past that.
Appreciate it.
Hi, my name is Kathy Ballard. I met the new committee for Measure H last night, and I'm impressed with all. Hopefully with training from maybe the city attorney in regards to Robert's Rules of Order and the Brown Act might help them out to step into that kind of a role. I wish they had gotten the information earlier so they could have made an educated decision on the budget and where money from that fund is going, but all in all, I was impressed. I also wanted to let council know, actually, Mr. Begonia, it wasn't a developer. I signed that petition, and I'll sign it again to recall you. I'm not in Mr. Jones's district, so obviously I can't sign that. You guys came out and said that it was because of a developer. It wasn't. It was that the citizens in the city are tired of not being listened to, talked to, 1.8 being spent, over 50 of our employees leaving our city and having to pay to rehire them, paying $7,500 for a web manager or to take photos. These are all expenses that I don't think are necessary. We're putting flowers in front of our house, but the house is falling down, and I'm hoping that with the change in council, these things might change. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I want to give an update on what's happening with the animals here in Los Banos. So I typed this up, I'll just read it. The first free spay and neuter clinic was held on April 26th. Thirty dogs were spayed or neutered at no cost to Los Banos residents. The second clinic was just held today, and there were 42 dogs spayed or neutered at no cost to Los Banos residents. There have been over 350 sign-ups for this service. We're hoping to continue running these clinics through September using the $100,000 grant received from UC Davis. These dogs also get microchipped, vaccinated, and a one-year dog license. It's just as we have been saying, if a low-cost or no-cost option is available, we can get this animal population explosion under control. I encourage everyone in Los Banos who has a dog that has not been spayed or neutered to look up Friends of Los Banos Animals or Feral Freedom Northern California online and apply for this free service. Something we could definitely use is a transporter van to shuttle the dogs and cats to and from the Los Banos shelter to the SNIP bus location in Salinas. If anyone has a vehicle like this, please contact Friends of Los Banos Animals or Feral Freedom Northern California through Facebook. I respectfully request the city council to approve funds for the purchase of a transport van from our local car dealership. Please consider putting this on your next consent agenda. About a year ago, several of us started working together to bring better services to the animals of Los Banos. We call ourselves Friends of Los Banos Animals and have worked very closely with Levi Fistori and his nonprofit organization, Feral Freedom Northern California, to get to where we are today, which is a heck of a lot better than we were a year ago. You can find both groups on Facebook. Feral Freedom Northern California was the driving force behind getting the UC Davis grant for $100,000. Without them, it would not have happened. Last month, we partnered with the Los Banos Animal Shelter, and again, using the UC Davis grant funds appropriated for microchipping, we were able to microchip about 200 dogs and cats at no cost to Los Banos residents. There were two drive-through events held on the weekends at the community center on Seventh Street. There are now 270 more pets in this town who might not end up stuck at the shelter because they're microchipped, and microchips work and spay and neuter works. We also hosted a table at the recent downtown street fair to help get the word out about these new services. We're working hard to get the message out to pet owners about these valuable services. The staff at the animal shelter deserve many thanks for what they have done and are doing to help fewer animals being put to death through no fault of their own. There is a lot more work to be done, and I feel like Friends of Los Banos Animals, Feral Freedom Northern California, and the animal shelter working together can accomplish any goals that are set. We could definitely use more people getting involved in order to continue the mission. Please look for the groups on Facebook, and thank you to all who participated. And I'll leave a copy.
Thank you.
Good evening, council, staff, and public. My name is Greg Hosteller. I'm here tonight to talk about the Shaughnessy Village subdivision entrance on Highway 165, known as Deans Way. As you know, the subdivision was accepted by the City of Los Banos a number of years ago. In fact, the subdivision and its fully completed public improvements were accepted on November 6, 2019 via Resolution Number 6143. Also, I mentioned in previous council meetings, the City of Los Banos sent me a letter dated September 1, 2022, signed by the former interim city manager, Greg Wellman. This letter is what I'd call somewhat of a demand letter or else undertone conveyed. On September 22, 2022, we sent a response to the letter to the City of Los Banos. We sent another response letter on May 30, 2023. We have not heard from the city in any written capacity since September 1, 2022. Nastygram. City manager Josh Panero met me and my staff at our office on April 2022 and again on April 2023. In both times, I requested that we formulate a meeting with Caltrans, the city, city engineer, consulting engineer, and/or two city council members, and include those persons that possess the authority to make decisions on design and approval of the proposed project. His response in both meetings occurrences was, he'd do it his way. I've yet to receive a response from him as to what his way is proposed to be. To date, we still have not received any formal written response from the city regarding Shaughnessy Village or Deans Way letters, but we did receive a draft memorandum of understanding, as what's known as an MOU, from city attorney Bill Vaughn. Bill Vaughn, on September 13, 2023, said MOU perhaps was an attempt to outline completion of the frontage improvements for the subdivision that had already been accepted in 2019. I brought copies of all the letters and MOU tonight for anyone in the public that would like to read the responses and become more informed on this subject matter, and such is at the back table or at my office. And that's your subdivision over there and your area over there, Mr. Begonia, and you've never called me about this in the time you've been elected for two years, and none of you have called me about the resolve this in four years. You've been here four years, you've never called me about any of this, asked me about anything, and have a meeting to get it resolved because you think you guys don't have to. Any additional comments made by the city manager would not, also would not put one dime in towards a resolution of this project or matter. The city has collected just under $3,400 permit and traffic fees for the 150 homes that make up Shaughnessy Village subdivision. Additionally, there are over 350 homes in the same development that fees of same were paid. That equates to almost $2 million in traffic fees. Not to contribute a dime, not including additional fees collected over the past 10 years, which equates to around $8 million in traffic fees, is unfair to the community. Again, the city deemed the Shaughnessy Village completed and accepted in 2019. The city has not yet purchased the land for the park and additional issue to be resolved. At last, I understand that the city manager and the mayor is out again attending another conference all week in Washington, DC, including hotel, food, wine, and dining, again on the dime of the taxpayers' community. And you know, this is unfortunate. This city has all these things that need to be fixed, and all the money this city's collected in landscaping fees, millions and millions of dollars in Los Banos? I don't know where the money is. Where's the community? And Mr., I'm sorry that city councilman Brett Jones is not here tonight, because he talked about I was doing this and being involved. He doesn't say my name, and nobody, you don't say it either, but the person, developer talking about is Greg Hosteller here live tonight that is behind and involved with the recall. It's up to the citizens to decide if they want to recall this council. One minute?
30 seconds.
And, you know, it's not about my finances. I'm 76 years old, and I got money to bank, and I don't have to build another house in this town, but I like to create jobs and contribute to this town and contribute a lot of money. But you can't blame this stuff on Greg Hosteller. Let the citizens vote on the recall and who they want to run this city, the money being spent, the most financially literate council member I know up here, and I'm not a supporter of Ms. Lewis, but she wants to hear about the budget, and you guys don't have a budget review. Everything's on the consent challenge. That isn't right, consent agenda. $121 million, $120 million budget, and you don't want to have a study session on the budget?
Thank you.
That's financially irresponsible. That's what I got to say about that, and I'll be back.
Thank you. Do I have anyone else? Okay, we'll close the public. If there was any written comments, they will be distributed to us, and they will be on the website to be read. Thank you. All right, we'll now move on to our next. It's the consideration of the approval of the consent agenda, and we'll turn over to city clerk.
Consent agenda ours follows. Warrant numbers 244708 through 245304 in the amount of $2,689,088.65. Minutes for the March 20, 2024 city council meeting. Minutes for the April 3, 2024 city council meeting. Appointment of Roger Pruitt to serve a four-year term expiring May 15, 2028 as the city's representative on the Merced County Mosquito Abatement District Board of Trustees. City Council Resolution Number 6766, amending the fiscal year 2023-2024 budget by increasing appropriations in Assessment District Number 9, account 279458200714, for expenditures in the amount of $11,500 for the rehabilitation of the Jolynn Storm Lift Pump. City Council Resolution 6767, accepting the exterior painting of the community center project as complete and authorizing the filing of a notice of completion with the Merced County Recorder Office. City Council Resolution Number 6768, approving the acceptance of a $10,000 Maddy's City Council Resolution Number 6768, approving the acceptance of a $10,000 Matties Fund New Grantee Operating Support Grant and amending the fiscal year 2023-2024 budget by increasing the appropriation amount for the expenditures and revenues in the amount of $10,000. City Council Resolution Number 6769, approving the acceptance of an additional $1,810 from UC Davis Corret Shelter Medicine, California, for all animals grant and amending the fiscal year 2023-2024 budget by increasing the appropriation amount for expenditures and revenues in the amount of $1,810. And City Council Resolution Number 6770, terminating emergency repair to the Los Banos Airport runway lighting, and the items are to be approved as submitted.
All right. Thank you. I'll go with, Ms. Lewis?
Yes, the items that I'd like to request to be pulled are Item 7A as in Apple, Item 7D as in David, Item 7E as in Edward, G as in George, and H as in Harry.
Okay, we'll start with Item A, and we'll turn to Finance Director, Ms. Portillo.
Well, I'll start off.
Go ahead with the other question.
Thank you. I'm requesting this item to be pulled this evening, which is something that I've never done in the years that I've been on council, because I've always been able to go into the office and talk to staff about what checks that are on this registered, who they're paid to, what they were paid for, and the amount. But today, I went in to speak to Ms. Portola, our new financial director, which we had a meeting, an appointment set to go over this, and she informed me that the city manager indicated that she was not to talk to me. Am I correct on that, Ms. Portola?
I'm sorry, our communications to council members to be channeled through city manager. That was my statement.
Okay, so in other words, you're not allowed to speak to me unless the city manager gives you the okay?
Any council member, any communication.
Well, I'm only speaking of myself tonight.
Oh.
Okay, thank you. It really is a travesty to not to be able to get information about what's on the agenda to speak to it clearly. So I'm going to ask a few questions tonight about some items that are on our check report that I have concern about. I'll start off with. We have three payments to a company called City Signs. One is on April the 12th for $2,738.06. Two were on April the 26th, one for $6,667.05, and the other one is $4,762.42. So I would like to know what those payments went out for.
Good evening, Councilwoman Lewis. I believe those are related to Parks and Rec, City Signs. I think that Animal Shelter may have made a purchase for City Signs as well, but I believe those are related to ours. We have a couple of projects going on. One was related to the Noah Jones Ball Field sign there, that blue sign that just went on the corner of, was that Seventh and E?
Yeah.
Yeah. And then another one is on the Canal Trail over off of Center. There's some educational tree signage there. And then we also updated a logo and some work at the community center relating to both the digital sign and the entry monument sign, I guess you'd call it, right there off of the driveway there. There was, I guess you'd call it, decal logos that had been damaged.
Okay, so one of the expenditures was for the Noah Jones Monument sign. And I don't know if it's on this particular check report, but I also noticed that there's some other monuments out there, football, baseball, and one other thing, and maybe soccer ball, I can't remember. Are those on this check register?
I don't believe so. Those were purchased from a different company, and I want to say those are purchased either the previous month. When they're ordered, you don't pay until they arrive, so they were ordered a few months back. I think that they arrived about, probably about eight weeks ago or so, but it was a different company. I'm trying to think of the name. I think, gosh, it's like Kirby Sports or something along those lines. I can get you that information, but they're sports ballards is what they're called, and yeah, similar ones were put in at the Ag Sports Complex, and yeah, so I don't believe these would have landed on this check register.
Okay, so in general, when we have ordered signs, such as the new electronic sign out on the east end of town, or when we upgraded the one on Pacheco and West Eye Street, I believe those all came to council for approval.
Because it was.
Yeah.
But I don't recall that these signs or monuments came to council for approval or that it was on the budget, if it was, if you can refresh my memory.
Yeah, the projects were in our budget, which was approved by city council, but as well, these came under the threshold of purchasing under 5,000. And additionally, in the case of the Noah Jones Ball Park, that is obviously a county-owned park as well.
Okay, so the Noah Jones one, is that the $4,762?
That sounds right. I'd have to, I'd have to pull it up to be.
Okay, because there was another one for 6,000, so I don't know what that is, and if we have a 5,000.
I think the 6,000 was the sign itself, and then there was some installation-related costs with the, I think the 4,000 is made up with that purchase as well as with the Canal Trail sign.
Okay, so the next one is McNamara Sports, Inc.
Mm-hmm.
We have on April the 26th, $905.79, and on March, I'm sorry, on May 3rd, we had $9,373.84. Ms. Portola, can you share that with me?
Which is another Parks and Recreation item.
What's, what is your question?
Well, what were they for?
So again, I'd have to look up the exact invoice to be sure, but typically, we buy, obviously, sports equipment from McNamara Sports. McNamara Sports is most often going to be our uniforms. In this case, given that it was the month, this last month, it would probably be related to our T-ball season. We also have summer volleyball. That's why I'd probably have to look at the invoice to be sure, but most likely, it's related to our T-ball season.
Okay, and I added up roughly, let's see, nine payments from April 19th to May 3rd to Ronnie's totaling $403,781.35. Now, I don't know if this is all within the last month, or if these are invoices that have been paid on, that were past due, but I, you know, it's just a lot of money that's gone out at one time here. And I know that we have contract services with him for maintaining our public property, and we've contracted with him, along with two other companies, to maintain the trees. But again, this is a lot of money.
So again, the city councils had approved the Noah Jones Ballpark landscaping project. That's going to be probably about three-quarters of that amount, as well as, you mentioned, the tree trimming, that's going to be a significant amount as well. That's under on-call services. And then there is going to be the monthly services and any irrigation repairs that are routine, but you're going to see a higher number because of that. Again, you're probably going to see a higher number this month as well because he was awarded the sidewalk project out there at Noah Jones.
Okay, so I'm going to go to a couple of other items that hopefully I can get more of a specific answer. Last month, Ms. Portola, when I spoke to you, I was able to find out on April the 5th that for a pay period of 315 to 4324, we paid $15,922.50 to Mr. Kuhn. On April 19th, we paid $14,850, and on May the 3rd, we paid $16,500. Now, the contract that we currently have with Mr. Kuhn indicates that he's to be paid, when he was the acting director, $26,400 per month, and that included everything, travel expenses, meals, lodgings, et cetera. So I don't know what pay period this is for, and it appears to be that we're still paying Mr. Kuhn the $26,000, $26,400 per month, which was at the rate of the acting director. So can someone tell me those two checks on April 19th and May 3rd, what that pay period was for?
Yes, Councilmember Lewis, I will go ahead and go back and provide and tied up what the pay periods were for, for that, and provide that information, but I do know that we are still under contract with Mr. Kuhn for financial services and consulting services in the finance department, as well as the current vacancy that we are continuing to try to fill for the finance manager. So it is the support services to our finance department at the moment for consulting, additional services, and for the support for the vacant vacancy that we have. But I will get back to you on the specific pay periods that those two checks are encompassing.
Okay, well, I have a lot more, but I'm not going to. Well, there's one other here, and I'm not sure what it is. On April the 12th, check number 244752 to Elk Grove F. as in Frank Incorporated for Can someone tell me what that was for?
We have purchased several vehicles in, for the, for our different departments. Between police, we also purchased a vehicle recently for our community development department, which are all been approved by the council.
So is Elk Grove a car dealership? Is that what you're telling me?
Yes. It's Elk Grove Ford. It's just cutting off.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, I will reserve and not, oh, one more, I'm sorry. On May the 3rd, check number 245096 to Gabriel Omar Ortiz Lopez, I'm hoping I'm pronouncing that correctly, at $7,500. Is that the videographer?
Yes.
Okay. So are we paying him as an independent contractor? And, because I thought we were paying him under his business name.
No, he is, he, he does have a corporation, so he does have a business name. I think it's just being cut off. I think it's his name, and you can't see the rest of the check register, but his W9 is his business name. It's however it's set up in the financial system.
Okay. All right, well, I'll make that my last one, but I, you know, I think it's, it makes it hard for council people who want to know where our dollars are being spent and to be frugal and to be open and transparent to our public about how money is being spent and where it's being spent and what it's being spent for, especially when there are things that are of large dollar amounts that have not come across the dais for approval by the council. So thank you to all the staff for helping me with that information, and I'll move on to the next one.
Okay. Item D. We'll turn to, of course, the city manager. Panero's not here, and this is going to be for the appointment of Roger Pruitt to serve as a four-year term.
Okay, I will direct my question to our city attorney, if I may. This appointment was done by the city manager. Is there some exception within the rule that, of how we operate as a council? I thought all committee appointments were supposed to come to the council for approval if, even if the city manager is making a recommendation. I thought that, well, let me put it this way. If someone is being appointed to a committee, usually there's an interviewing process of the mayor or the city manager or what have you with another council member, and then the recommendation is made. But it appears that, on this report, that the city manager alone is making the recommendation, and then the council is supposed to approve it. And I don't know if this is, you know, for the mosquito abatement district board, if this is something that, if this is the way it normally happens. That's what I'm trying to find out.
As you know, our representative on the mosquito abatement board, Mark Bodley, passed away.
Yes.
Late last year. This is not a committee of the city. This is an appointment to a, as a representative to the mosquito abatement district. I am unfamiliar with, and I don't believe there's anything in our code that delineates how we select that person to be nominated for that position on that particular board, similar to your appointment to the air board and so on and so forth.
Well, my appointment to the air board was a vote by all the cities within the city. There was a protocol for that. And being that this is, you know, a part of their board of directors, and it's our city, I would think that there, you know, perhaps we need to develop a protocol because I don't feel that it should be the appointment or the request of the appointment by the city manager. That should come to the legislative body. So at this point, you know, it appears that nothing can be done.
Just interrupt you there. It is coming to you right now.
Yeah, it's coming to, and that's what I'm saying. There's nothing that we can do at this point because it is coming to us at this particular meeting, but I think this is something that needs to be clarified as to how these appointments are going to be done. The air board that I sit on, there's a specific criteria for that, and you put in an application. It could come from anyone within the cities that are selected for the time to be on the board, and it is voted by every city within the county. And there's a county member on the air board from every board of supervisors, so that's how that process happens.
Yeah, the mosquito abatement district may have a protocol for how they accept persons onto their board. I'm unaware of what that might be, though.
All right, well.
So we move to Item E.
Okay, so Item E. This is for Public Works and.
Mr. Bergerson?
So my question is, I believe we've made some allocations for this project already, and we're asking for a budget increase. Is there something that was missed when the original project came to the city council?
No, ma'am. It was, one of the pumps broke, and it was not anticipated, so this is to repair and replace the motor at pump number two at that lift station. So it was unanticipated and was not budgeted for.
Okay, so that, when, when the first evaluation was done, there was no indication that the pump could be faulty at that time?
That's correct, ma'am.
Okay. All right, thank you. And then Item G and H, I'm just going to take that myself, and I read those projects, and I want to give a shout out and congratulations to our Sergeant Mendez, who took the time to seek out these programs and find these grants. It's just a wonderful job and an addition of additional money that our police department needs to help run the animal shelter. And Chief, you have a really good employee who is working hard to help bring additional funds to our city for our animal shelter. I'm, I'm hoping that he's going to be out there looking for more money, to the point where perhaps it can help us at one day build a new shelter. And I just want to congratulate him for doing this hard work and making sure that we're getting this extra money for our animal shelter. And that's it on the consent agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis. And now, would you like to make the? And now, would you like to make the motion to approve the?
Yes, I will.
All right.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted.
Do I have a second? Mr. Begonia?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We'll now move on to item number eight. Permanent local housing allocation competitive navigation centers. And we'll turn to Community Economic Development Director, Ms. Alms.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm kind of like in between microphones. For this item, I'm going to call up Kristi McCammon. She's our housing program manager for the City of Los Banas. We're going to tag team this presentation. Kristi is the expert, not only the subject matter expert, but she's also our expert grant writer. So we do want to start off with just a little bit of background on this particular funding source. So permanent local housing allocation is provided through SB 2, Senate Bill 2. It provides direct allocation to local governments for eligible housing and homelessness activities. The intent is to provide a permanent ongoing, ongoing source of funding to local governments for housing-related projects and programs that assist in addressing the unmet housing needs of their local communities. So what this is, these are fees for recording. So every time someone records a document at Merced County Recorder's Office, and it's for the City of Los Banas, there's a fee that's attached to that recordation, and that fee is for PLHA, permanent local housing allocation. So it's, it's, well, I should take that back. It's for SB 2. It's SB 2 allocation. And I won't get into the weeds of how SB 2 is broken down, but just wanting to explain that this is an ongoing funding source that is collected with recording documents. So it's a stable source of income. HCD released a notice of funding availability on March 6, 2024, announcing the release of the non-entitlement local government competitive notice of funding availability. What that all just means is that we are a non-entitlement city. That means we are less than 50,000 in population, local government, city, competitive. So this is not the direct allocation. If you recall, a couple months ago, back in March, we asked the council for a direction on our allocation. So that's a direct allocation just for Los Banas from these SB 2 funds. But from SB 2, there's also a competitive batch of funds that we are eligible to compete for. And that's what Kristi is going to be applying for, hopefully, with the support, the direction from the city council. We will be applying for $1 million, which would be available through a competitive process for the eligible activity of assistance to persons who are experiencing or at risk of homelessness. Did I miss anything there, Kristi? And please feel free, I know this can get a little complicated with the SB 2 and the PLO and all the acronym NOFA soup, but feel free to stop us. But Kristi, we good?
So it's a, it's a great opportunity to get in the competitive space for the permanent local housing allocation grant. We are definitely leveraging the formulaic portion, but now we want to take it a step further. We want to go for the competitive amount. The grant application, I've got about 95% of it written. When that draft is finished for review, and if the will of the council is to accept this resolution and pass it, then that'll go before Stacy, Souza Alms, and with the help of our outreach coordinator, who is such an expert in her field, Jennifer Loa. We'll work on that together, just like we did for the encampment resolution fund, because nothing is done alone. And so we're really hoping to build upon leveraging the funds so that we can save our general fund. This, this particular competitive grant does have an administrative piece. So those funds would be used to offset the cost that you've invested in me and in the housing division.
So the request tonight is to apply for $1 million. This would be for three bridge homes. Within the staff report, we explain the emergency shelter capacity that we have in Los Banas. So currently, we do have, and that's, I'm sorry, I'm jumping down to the third circle. So our current capacity, we do have two bridge homes with 20 beds. But with this $1 million for three bridge homes, that could be for 30 people or potentially 40. It just depends on the space that we get. But this model is successful right now with the two bridge homes that we do have that are being serviced, operated by the Merced Rescue Mission. So they do provide emergency shelter, which helps to provide that gap, which we'll talk a little bit about, the importance of emergency shelter. Anything that I missed there?
Yeah, just to add, thank you, Stacy, that we're really trying to create more capacity in a model that we show evidence in efficacy. So the current bridge house model, our mini navigation center, which a navigation center by, by state's definition is an emergency shelter for those unhoused with services. And that's the navigation piece, is that you have case managers, you have service coordinators, so that we don't just have a shelter, we don't just have a bed. We actually have a navigation center so that we can guide people toward a path of permanent housing, employment, income benefits, and that sort of thing. We see the efficacy of what's happening now. We're looking at the data. We find it to be a good method, an effective method. And so now we want to grow that capacity through this competitive grant.
Okay, so the need for emergency shelter, it is essential. It's an essential element of the city's system, that multi-response system to homelessness. Our current bridge homes have remained at 100% capacity since May of 2023. And that's really since Kristi has recreated the housing division and was able to fully stand up that division. Those bridge homes have been at 100% capacity. It helps people experiencing homelessness to come out of public space encampments and shelter indoors. And then once they're indoors, those participants are able to stabilize and better participate in case management.
And that's a really important piece, the stabilization. Many people who are living unhoused, especially victims and survivors of violence, are using the evenings to stay awake and stay ever vigilant. This means they're sleeping through the day. This means they're going hungry. They're not resting. It is very difficult, although we still do it, to case manage and to engage with people when they're in this state. When somebody has a feeling of safety, of their bodies regulating, their nervous systems regulating, and for them to eat nourishing food, the case management experience of case managed for many, many moons is vastly different. And so this is an essential piece. Our efficiency of case management grows exponentially when we can get people out of fight, flight, fawn, or freeze.
So we do want to take a moment, we want to take a moment just to talk about the Encampment Resolution Fund Grant, IRF, is what we affectionately call it, and how this is completely separate, a completely separate project from the IRF funding that we were awarded. So the city was recently awarded $11.8 million from IRF for permanent supportive housing and case management. This would be for at least 50 unhoused people. These would be for tiny homes, but could have for a potential of up to 100 people. IRF will permanently house those experiencing homelessness, but it does not address the need and the lack of emergency shelter still needed within the city. So we would still have that gap. IRF is important and, and needed. We do need these units to permanently support, well, permanently house, but also with supportive services. But we still have that gap that when, we need to get folks out of public encampments, stabilized in a shelter to be able to get them the services that they need, which the next slide talks a little bit more about those services. Are we good to go jump to the next one? We can?
Absolutely. IRF, yay.
Yes.
IRF, yay.
So they, so grateful to Kristi and Jennifer for all their hard work in us being able to obtain that $11.8 million. That's a huge shot in the arm. But this PLHA funding will be serving a whole different purpose. So that purpose is still needed to address that unmet need, that housing need of people experiencing homelessness by providing service-enriched shelter. It provides temporary living facilities while case managers connect individuals to income, their public benefits, health services, shelter, and it has a housing focus into permanent shelters. So it gets those folks that were just in a public encampment ready for permanent shelter. And this will complement our IRF project by providing emergency shelter. We good?
We're good.
All right.
Go Stacy.
I've been educated by Kristi, our subject matter expert.
I've been educated by Stacy.
So our fiscal impact, there would be no impact to the general fund. PLHA funds are allocated through, like explained earlier, through HCD from SB 2. It increases, would increase our HCD grant expenditure account for fiscal year '24, '25, for a total of $1 million. There may be a rollover into fiscal year '25, '26, just depending on when they award the grant. And then there would be an increase to the HCD grant revenue account in fiscal year '24, '25. Again, there may be a rollover into fiscal year '25, '26, depending on when. And we will say when we are awarded for a total of $1 million. And we would also be eligible of that $1 million to receive $50,000, which would reimburse the city for administration and reporting of the grant. This would reimburse the city for the housing division's time and efforts to administer and report on the grant. Lots of reporting is required with state grants. We good? All right. So with that, staff is recommending that the city council would adopt resolution number 6771, authorizing the application for the permanent local housing allocation program, non-entitlement local government competitive component grant to the state of California. And that concludes our presentation.
Thank you, Stacy. One question, can you go back a slide?
Yeah. Yeah, this one?
That one right there. Can you say again that HCD from SB 2 and COC had, has nothing to do with our 11.8 that we received from the, correct?
Yes, that is true. So we did receive support letters from Merced County HSA. We also received support from our local legislators. But this was funding that the City of Los Banas applied all by ourselves. We did not have. It was not funding that was allocated to the COC. This was funding that the city applied for. And, and it's the housing division that was able to secure that funding for us. So yes, no, that money did not come from Merced County or the COC.
Correct. And the three, our department heads and Kristi and Jen are the ones to thank for that.
Oh, thank you very much. We, we appreciate the support. It was possible because of the investment that you made. And Ms. Stacy, Ms. Stacy is a great mentor.
Well, I, I see with going, going forward, I, I believe, I don't think there's going to be anybody that's going to check to this up here, because I think, I want to ask, to go for this grant, why, I mean, it's not just a application. We have to go through a process of a resolution?
We do. It is a requirement of this grant, which was not a requirement of IRF, but it is a requirement of this grant that we do have to have a resolution from the legislative body.
Okay. I'll check with anybody else that has any questions. Ms. Lewis?
Thank you. Okay, so thank you for the presentation and the details on the program. But for our community and the members of our community, you know, naturally, you don't know where these homes are going to be. But is there going to be staff on duty 24/7?
Not 24/7. This would be, on, within IRF, there's a completely different staffing model.
I'm talking about.
Are you talking about the bridge homes?
I'm talking about the bridge home.
We have so many beautiful things going on. It's hard to choose between them. So these bridge homes that we would be applying for through the grant would be staffed in case management, Monday through Friday, 8 to 5. But there would be a house monitor staffed 24/7. And that really is to address the, the off-hour overnight and holiday needs of the shelter residents. And so that, that presence is there 24/7.
Okay. And we do have, I believe you said, two other sites in Los Banas. One not, we have a third site, but it's not affiliated with the city. Could you let the public know if, if there are a lot of police service calls coming or whether or not there are disturbances within that community around the residents in the neighborhood?
Sure. So the existing bridge homes, the calls for service that I've experienced personally since I arrived to the family in 2023, I've, I've heard of one that I was involved with. And Chief Reyna may have better statistics there. I can tell you that Jennifer and I are in and out of these homes all day long, taking people to appointments, working on paperwork. And the homes are lovely. They're in established neighborhoods. They're in, you can't distinguish them really between any other homes that are in the neighborhoods. They're just lovely homes. When you go inside the homes, there's definitely a feeling of community. You can usually smell food cooking, which is wonderful because a lot of the folks that are staying in the shelter have not had the opportunity to cook in the kitchen, and they're very excited about that. Then there are chores that are, that are completed each day. It's a lot like any other household. It's a, it's a different kind of family makeup. But because of that, I think we receive fewer calls for service that we do in the encampment. But Chief Reyna, you could absolutely correct me here.
Yes, councilmember. So calls are very minimal. In fact, very infrequent. And generally, it is only surrounding someone who has been moved in, and the situation doesn't work out, and we have to help them by escorting them out. And that's just to maintain the peace. But generally, we don't even, we wouldn't know that these, these facilities are in these fine neighborhoods.
Well, it certainly is a testimony to the organization of this type of home setting, to have people who don't know each other or may know each other being able to live in a communal situation. That, that could be very hard for people to do.
Agreed.
But, you know, I, I don't want to sound negative with this, but perhaps the, the living in the homeless situation in a communal environment such as that helps them a bit transition into this and to be stabilized and hopefully moved on to some other permanent housing situation. It, it's just too bad we don't have more money available to do this, this type of transition, to get people help. And, and I hope, and I, I would assume that the residents who are living in these transitional homes are acceptant of the mental health services and case management services and, you know, seeing their doctor or anybody else that they may need to see on a regular basis because they realize this, they realize that this keeps them out of the system and off the street and, you know, being, being unhoused or homeless again. So thank you for the, the work that you do.
Well, thank you to the team. I will share in, in that spirit. We just had several of our bridge home emergency shelter residents graduate from breaking barriers. These are people that were in both of the bridge homes we attended. It was a beautiful moment for those folks to get through ACEs Overcomers, 12 weeks of, of instruction, and they graduated with their diplomas, and it was just beautiful. So big, big kudos to Merced Rescue Mission and the cohort that we've created of a multidisciplinary team with the housing division, members of the faith community and agencies and organizations to make it happen. We appreciate the investment.
And, and just one other question, not related to this project, since you guys brought it up under the IRF. I still have to laugh at that. Are, are we going to have? Are we going to have an agenda item and a public hearing for those?
Yes. So that will come to the council to accept the award, which will have then a budget adjustment with that.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm very sorry.
Miss Begonia, do you have anything? No, I'll just check and see if you had anything. Oh, okay. Again, thank you, Christie.
You're very welcome, thank you.
Your helper, Jen. All right. So if we have no more questions, I'll entertain a motion to accept City Council Resolution Number 6771 as read. Mr. Begonia?
I'd like to make a motion to accept City Council Resolution Number 6771 as read.
And I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Lewis, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. And now we'll go to item number nine. Thank you, Jen, or Christie, thank you so much.
Thank you, I appreciate it. You're welcome.
We'll go to item number nine. And as I see, there's no reports for public notices. Our city manager is out in Washington tonight with the mayor. And we'll move to number 11. I was not, I'll actually first start with Ms. Lewis with the Peninsula Clean Energy. If you have anything?
No, I don't have Peninsula Clean Energy. I have San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution.
Or San Joaquin, I'm sorry.
I have no report. We have our meeting tomorrow.
Okay, meeting tomorrow. I have, I was not advised of any, anything for the MCAG. So now we'll move on to item number 12, City Council Reports. And we'll start with Mr. Begonia.
Ready? I'd like to just say awesome job and thank you to Ms. McCammon on your presentation and all the work you've done. That's incredible. And then I'd like to address Ms. Kathy Ballard. Thank you for your honesty. And then you said something that I agree with completely. We are putting flowers in front of the house. And the houses are definitely falling apart. Depending on where you live on, they're falling apart big time. They've been falling apart long before I showed up here, long before most any of us showed up here. And I can assure you, Ms. Ballard, the citizens of District 2, the citizens of Los Banos, that this council is working hard on ridding the city of the problem that's been plaguing us for far too long. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. Brett Jones, Mr. Brett Jones is absent, so we'll move to Ms. Lewis. Okay.
Thank you, thank you. Mayor Protem, I have a few items on my list. First, I want to, excuse me, thank Pastor Hammond for the National Day of Prayer. He always leads and sponsors this organization, the event, I mean, and all the pastors in our community that participated and came to pray for our city, for our state, and for our nation, which is well-needed. So thank you to all the pastors and to Pastor Hammond for keeping that going in our city of Los Banos. At our last meeting on April the 17th, I made a request for an update on our TOT sales tax, sales tax, and also the, I guess, according to the the agenda item that we approved on April 19th of '23, we hired an agency Municipal Services LLC, which would be looking at our sales use tax analysis, a fixed at $3,000 a year and $800 per lodging unit for TOT analysis and $1,000 per lodging property for auditing. And we haven't had a report back on the outcome of that. I just did a basic calculation, and I'm not sure if I did this right based on the fiscal impact. But I think there's roughly maybe about seven motels here in Los Banos. We paid the annual fee of $3,000. If we have seven motels for the TOT tax, that would be roughly about $5,600. And then the extra $1,000 for lodging properties audit on the TOT program. So that's roughly about $15,600 a year. And we're locked into this contract for three years until 2026. But to date, there's been no report back to council on whether or not there were any findings in regards to the things that this organization was supposed to evaluate and look for. So I'm making a request again. I don't know if either Ms. Portola or Mr. Kuhn is prepared this evening to give a report on my request from last, the last meeting or not. So maybe you guys can address this for me.
I don't think we can make a report on that at this time, though, because if it's not on the agenda.
We have a preliminary report, and I will be happy to provide the details with the outstanding question on the check register when we provide this information. Yeah.
Okay, so I'm not understanding. The report request that I made at the last meeting was to tell us, well, what I want to know is what we were getting for the money we spent, basically. We're spending, could be an estimate of $15,000. Did we get any money back from this investigation? What did the investigation give us? What were the findings from the investigation? So now we're on the hook for another year of fees to this company, and we haven't gotten a report back as to what the findings were. So that's what I'm asking for. I'm not asking for what was on the check register that went out to them. I want to know what the findings are in regards to this company that we hired.
Absolutely, we will include that information.
Okay, so that will be, what, at the next meeting?
Sure.
Okay. Okay, each year, our city has an independent audit by a company. The company that does our audit in general is, has been Price Page Company. They submitted their audit for 2022, which Mr. Kuhn presented last year to us. It was a bit unusual, because normally whoever does the work product is the company that comes and makes the presentation to us. We had at the airboard already, Price Page has already done the audit, presented it to the airboard back in February. The reason I have concerns, because I got a call from them requesting information, which I wasn't able to provide because I didn't have the information. But I'm concerned as to why we haven't gotten, we haven't had Price Page here to give their findings from the audit that they did for us this past year.
We are currently working on the audit for fiscal year '22, '23. We are expected to complete it and bring it over to council to present it next council meeting in June. Yes, so that's.
So who's going to present that audit? Is it going to be Price Page? Because that's what we pay them to do, is to, they make the findings, and they are usually the ones to come and tell us.
We normally bring the report to be accepted to council.
I'm sorry, what was that?
We normally bring the financial report for acceptance to council.
We normally bring Price Page here to give the audit report, and the council accept it, not our staff. It's not your work, it's their work.
Right.
So Price Page has always come to council to give us the report. So I'm asking, when is Price Page going to come and present the audit that they did to council? Because you're a third person giving a report for an organization that's done the investigation to tell us what their findings are.
Yeah, I will, I will take your request and see. Normally, and I will check how we have done this in the past. Different cities operate differently. We would, we have some cities where, you're correct, the auditor would potentially come and present. In other cities, the report is presented and requested to be received by the council, and it's provided by staff.
And I understand that. But what I'm telling you is this has been the practice of the city of Los Banos, is to have the company who did the audit come and make the presentation. So I hope that, you know, there's not going to be a stalemate to not allow the company to come and present their own findings. I think I touched bases a little bit with Mr. Kuhn. And certainly, this is an answer that the city manager needs to bring back to council. We do have a financial director on board. And I'm not sure why we still need a financial consultant to be paid at the price of, yeah, what is it? At the price of $26,400 a month. That's the salary we agreed to in contract with him when we hired him as the acting financial director. And there hasn't been a contract that's been brought back to council to make an adjustment. If he is acting in lieu of the employee who, Kim, who terminated, who retired from the county, then in my opinion, the salary needs to be adjusted from a sitting, an acting director of the Finance Department to another position, which is a lesser paying position. But I would assume that when we hired our financial director, that we hired someone that was capable of handling the job. So as a councilperson and one who is trying to be open and fiscally responsible for the monies that our taxpayers pay to the city of Los Banos, I'm not sure why we still have a second person as a consultant to our financial director. We have a position that's available for hiring. I don't know whether or not that position, anyone has put in an application for that position or not. But even so, I don't know why we're paying two directors' salaries at this time and having him on as a consultant. If he's consulting or filling in for Kim's position, I can understand that, filling in for a position until we can hire. But we should not be paying that position at the price that we're paying it now. It needs to be a lesser, a lesser salary rate than what we're paying. So again, we're paying for two directors, and we have, we have one permanent one now. We have a director on board. I don't know why we're paying the higher salary. And I think it would be appropriate that a new contract be brought back to the council to adjust the salary that we're paying Mr. Kuhn, since we now have a full-time employee on board for that position. I think some of the other questions have basically been answered for me already through the council meeting. So that's it for now.
All right, thank you, Ms. Lewis. And I'll go last. Definitely shout out to, again, to our grant writers and our department heads inside the City Hall, Christie and Jen and our department heads. Awesome job on that. I also want to say, we do have a wonderful, a lot of churches that do wonderful things around our city. I think that's what holds a lot of our city folks together, is all of our wonderful churches that we have here. They do a lot of work all around town. Thank you, guys, very much. Other than that, I don't have much more to say, so I've got to get a good night's rest tonight and got a long trip tomorrow. So I'll take a motion for adjournment. Ms. Lewis?
So moved.
Second? Miss Begonia?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Meeting is adjourned at 7:21.